Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the special session of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 at 6:30 PM. We received an email from Vice Mayor Carr stating that he cannot attend this meeting tonight due to the occasional conflict. I need a motion to excuse him.
Motion to excuse. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terri Penny?
Yes.
Mayor Lahuzas?
Yes. Ms. Jacobs, roll call for the meeting, please.
Mayor Lahuzas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr is absent and excused. Commissioner Terri Penny?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by our city attorney, following by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please stand.
Dear Lord, we come together today to ask your guidance, wisdom, and support throughout this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I have announcements to make. The Application 16, which is the Application 21-105 Northside Engineering, the first reading. 16B, the ordinance 2021-19 Future Land Use, has been deferred. Also, the 16C, the ordinance 2021-20 Rizone, have been deferred. It was an error to the advertisement, so the date has not been determined yet. The item number 19, which is the ordinance 2021-24, the Application 21-128 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Property Rights Element, this first reading, has been deferred to December 7th, 2021 regularization. Also, if you please be advised that at 7:30 PM, the public hearing portion of the meeting must begin. Once the public hearing portion is completed, we will continue the meeting from where we left off. And again, I'd like to remind you, everyone, that based on the city rules and procedures, all public comments must be directed only to the Chair of the Meeting in a professional manner with respect, without personal attacks. Also, cheering and clapping is not permitted during the debate. And now we're going to the comments. Public comments on the items will not be discussed this evening. If anyone has any comments, please come to the podium stage in AM and Y address. For the record, you'll be given four minutes.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I'd just like to once again thank everyone that came out to the marathon meeting last Tuesday. And Wednesday, I guess it was, and Thursday. I don't know. It was a, it was a long couple of days. We got here, we had a long meeting, and then it got continued to the next day, and then it went all night. Left here about 5:00 AM. And I was thinking about that, you know, how all those people came out here to voice their opinion about how dangerous they think the Anne Claude Harbor project is. But it was also dangerous for them to have to show up here. Because it took away the Zoom and the phone call and the reading of emails. And that just, I mean, it literally put people's lives at risk. But that's how much they care to voice their opinion. That they would take that risk and come out here and stay all night. And then again, they didn't get to speak until the very end. And I was remembering our marathon meeting in 2005. The mayor back then allowed the public to speak first. 300 people showed up to speak at that meeting. The public went first. And then they did all the rest. That way, those people got heard. You don't have to put people's lives at risk. You can change the rules back and allow Zoom and allow phone calls and read their emails into the record. Those people would have been happy just to write you emails about what they had to say. But now they know that you won't read them into the record, so they're not going to do that. They prefer just to take the risk and come out and speak. And it's not too late. You guys can still end that project next week. You're saving a lot of lives, you do that. So it's not too late for the Morgan Group to pull that project either. So those things can happen. It's not too late for Walmart to donate that land, so we can make it a park. All these things are possible. But the one thing you know you have control over is allowing Zoom, phone calls, and reading of emails into the record. That you can do. And you've seen how much people are in opposition to this thing, and they want to be heard about it. It's just not that much of an ask, you know, to allow people to be heard. I truly don't know what's going on. Why you would try to take somebody's rights away, make it difficult for them. But that's where we are. So a bunch of us will see you next week. Hopefully, we get you to do the right thing. My understanding is that Peter Delakos has retained his engineer, his expert, for traffic, so he can enlighten you on the truly dangerous situation that's being proposed there. So hopefully, you'll listen, and you learn, and you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening. John Lynn on the board, Anita Protes, 901 Bayshore Drive. Today, going down to Morton Plant, to my surgeon, I saw a sign in Dunedin, and I was very impressed. It said, "Thank you. Happy holidays to our servicemen who fought for freedom in Iraq." And then on the way back home, I went through Safety Harbor, and they had one. And I was thinking, Mayor, it's just like one of those big, long, plastic signs that copula puts over Carnival and things like that. If we couldn't get one and have it here by the time we have our Christmas parade to let the veterans know, and they had the word veteran on there also, veterans of the armed services, and let the ones who come from Tarpon Springs know that we are thankful for what they have given to this country, fighting for freedom, and we respect them. And I think that would be a nice gesture, and just put it around the curve there on Stakes, where the War Memorial is, so everybody could see it as they go around. And they can know that we are thankful for their efforts. We have the right to have a meeting, speak our peace, and have our freedoms. And the clock at the bayou looks very nice. It made me realize I was late getting here. So the clock looks very, very nice. But if we can do something and wrap it around the curve there where the War Memorial is, even if it stood this high, people could read it. And the men from the armed services know that we support them, and we thank them for their services. That would be very, very good. And I want to thank you all for your vote last week. Amazing to me, when you go out on the street, to the grocery store, Walmart, every place, people said, "I'm glad it's over with, and it's coming." It means money for the community. And I told them, "We have one more hearing." But we all know the fact is, people don't all come to the meeting to speak out. And we have so many people here, and if you get out, you're going to hear that they feel you made the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Here none. Thank you. We are now going to the consent agenda. Item number one is the special events. A, second Saturday Market Revised. B is the Sponge Ducks Arts and Craft Show. Item number two is the award file, number 220038-C-AS Cure In Place Pipeline Services Utilized, City of Milton, ITV Number 2021.02. Number three is the increase file, number 180129-C-CM Fancy Gate Operators and Handrails, Pinellas County Cooperative Contract Number 1780122BLN. Are there any items that you'd like to pull? I hear none. We go into the public comments of the items one, two, and three. Do we have any public comments on these items? I hear none. The Chair will obtain a motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Are there any commission comments on these items? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terri Penny?
Yes.
Mayor Lahuzas?
Yes. We now go into the special consent agenda. Item before, the Historic Market Program Update Staff Report.
Thank you. Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. And I'm pleased to be here today with Ed Hoffman. He's the president of the Tarpon Springs Historical Society. And we're here to present to you the local market program that we've been talking about that the Historical Society has developed. And before I start, I just wanted to give a special thank you to the late Dudley Sally. He was the president of the Historical Society when we started working on this. And it was really a labor of love for him. And when he passed away in July, I know that he would be really pleased to know that the program that he created is moving forward. So I just wanted to say that as we start. Okay, just for some background, the city's been undergoing a lot of signage programs over the past several years, which have included the wayfinding signs, the gateway signs that were recently installed at different entries to the city, the new street signs throughout the historic district and throughout the CRA, our new golf course sign, and then finally, the state and local historic markers. Okay, so with the historic markers, initially, if you recall, the Board of Commissioners identified 12 sites that were public sites, with the exception of the Silver King Brewery, to put state historic markers on and to file applications with the state. At the same time, we also looked at downtown buildings to put historic markers on those buildings to create a local historic walking tour. So I want to thank a lot of the people who helped create the text. This totals 25 historic markers. And so putting together the text for all those markers was a big project. The city library staff and Carrie Calvis were awesome in helping the Historical Society. And Phyllis Colianos presented a lot of research. Tina Bucavalis was very helpful in her research. And then through our public engagement process, we had several comments from residents and citizens who provided information that was helpful. So throughout all of that, we were able to put together the text for these 25 markers. And to date, we've got 13 buildings downtown that have markers. And we have five sites of those original 12 that were approved by the state. Three of them have been installed. Two are here and ready to be installed. And two are, I'm sorry, one is here. Two more are coming by the end of the year. There's been some shipping delays, as you probably are aware of. And then for those final seven sites, they are going to be receiving markers through this local historic marker program. The program we've been working on with the Historical Society presents many advantages to the city. Number one, it gives us local control. The state process is long and requires a lot of documentation. You're not always guaranteed that you're going to have approval for your site. So having a local program will guarantee that the sites that we, as a city, and the residents believe are historic will get the recognition that they need. It's also going to be managed by the Historical Society, which is our local preservation leaders. And it consolidates all the different types of signage into one program. So right now, if you can apply for a building, a site, a residential home, we've got a lot of beautiful homes in the Golden Crescent, a place, a thing. You could have a monument for a tree. All of those things would be, you know, put under this one program. These plaques can include historic photographs. So photographs of what the site used to look like can be etched on. And then ensures that we'll have an ongoing program. The Historical Society's developed all of the pieces of the program, including the design, which is similar to the building markers. They come in various sizes. It will depend on what the site's been commemorated, from 13 by 18 to 24 by 30. They can be wall, pole, or fence-mounted. All of the program applications and guideline is in your backup, including a property owner's agreement that's been approved by the city attorney. The recommendations that they have for five of the sites are to be pole-mounted at the 24 by 30 size. And two of the sites are recommended to be building-mounted at the 13 by 18 site. And then finally, under funding, the cost of the seven markers in total will be between 18,000 to 21,000. The higher end would include an etched photograph on each of the markers. Includes the photo, the poles, the caps, and the freight. We did budget 10,000 in the FY '22 general fund, so additional allocation would be needed. The sites that are in the CRA would be funded through the CRA. The sites that are in the general fund would be funded through the general fund. So now I'd like to bring Ed Hoffman up to give you a little bit more information.
Thank you, Karen. Ed Hoffman, office at 29 West Orange Street here in town. I just wanted to say, on behalf of the Historical Society, that the city has been such a great partner. As I came back and talked a while back about the depot being the housing of our memory, our collective memory of the city in the past, and how important that is. And so continuing that, with the city doing this project with us, and really spearheading it so wonderfully, and carrying some tremendous load and making it happen. It takes those valuable resources that we have, this knowledge of our past, and not just housing it in the depot. You have to go to the depot to find out what Tarpon Springs is about. It's now being brought out into the community, into the historic district. And so we think that's really exciting. That's an extension. And it puts people out there, you know, 24/7 to be able to read a sign about what they're looking at in the city. So we're just so appreciative of all the work that the city has done and the support that the city is giving this project. And it is, you know, it is distressing about Dudley not being with us, because he did love this project, and something that we feel is really important. And we're excited to continue it on, and we thank you so much for the partnership that the commission and the city is giving us, and making all of this work. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And with that, if you have any questions or comments, we're both here.
Ms. Lemmons, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work that you've been doing on this board program. I'd also like to thank the Historical Society, Mr. Hoffman, Phyllis Colianos, and everybody else that has been working on that. We're going to go to the public comments, and then we'll come back. Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Do we have any public comments on this item? I hear none. The Chair will obtain a motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to the commission comments. Ms. Lemmons, you stated that the seven remaining sites will be receiving these historical markets with a program that is developed by our Historical Society that will cost anywhere from 18,000 to 21,000, and will have $10,000 budgeted. I will ask our city manager and our finance director, and of course, with the consensus of my fellow commissioners, to increase these budget to $30,000. And if we have any funding that is left over, we can actually carry for next year. I'd like to include that to the, Mr. Col-
I just want to say that there is money from rollover and from CRA. There is money at the board to go forward to do all seven of those signs. We've already found it and ready for tonight to be able to present that to you, to go forward with all seven.
Okay, so you don't want $30,000?
I think it's between eight, we'll know when the bids, obviously, the bids come in. We think it's 18 to 21 we need totally. So the money is available to make up and do all seven of those signs. We'll be ready when the actual price comes in.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to speak to Ms. Phyllis Colianos in regards to this program. She was so excited about it. And she believes like that we should have a criteria and guidelines to assist the Historical Society to be able to manage this program. But also, she made a suggestion that the market for the Ankle Key Lighthouse at Sunset Beach, to avoid confusion to the people, especially to the visitors, we should have a picture of the lighthouse, so people don't think that the lighthouse is part of the Sunset, Sunset Beach. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Terri Penny.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, and I'll be relatively brief. I just want to offer accolades and thanks to city staff and the Historical Society, and then all the residents that have been involved with some of the volunteerism as it relates to the texts and different messaging that'll be found on these signs. I think all of the locations that have been identified are premium. So I know that even a simple task like this, where we're trying to, you know, shed great light on our rich history and cultural, culture, that even something as small as a task like this can take, you know, mountains of time. So I recognize that, and certainly appreciative of it. And I know that we have to tread lightly on, you know, some of our history to make sure that it's accurate, you know, with the different historians around town. So I can definitely appreciate all of it, and just thanks for spearheading this and seeing it through, and everything. All the plaques that I've seen to date look fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did just have one question as far as the application process goes. How long roughly, or do we have an idea yet of how long it takes from application to actually getting the signs up?
Once they submit the application, if they have all of the document and materials, Historical Society would meet and go through it if it's all approved. I don't know how long that would take. I think they meet monthly. And then the markers have been taking six to eight weeks, but that's been more like 10 to 12 to 16 weeks, so that, you know, for the shipping. But I would say if somebody has an application that is complete, it would meet within the month, so maybe two or three months.
Okay. That was my only question. Ms. Lemmons, Mr. Hoffman, everybody involved. I just want to say thank you so much. It's a great program. This is one of those rare things that I actually hope we spend more money on over time as it gets more popular, and we can add more of these. So really appreciate all your effort on this. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Vadikiotis, you have any comments?
I do. What is the motion, I guess I should ask?
To approve. To approve?
To prove what?
What's presented to us?
The seven markers, or maybe you can clarify, Ms. Lemmons?
Yeah, it's really not approving, because it's the Historical Society's program. We wanted to, they wanted to present it to you, so you knew what it was, because you're funding it. So, you know, an allocation of funding might be-
We were looking for approval tonight to move forward with the seven signs.
Okay, so there's no money or anything involved in tonight, just to concur with what was presented? Right.
Well-
All right, I understand that. Thank you.
The city manager made a comment that we do have enough funding to finish the seven markers.
No, I don't have an issue. I just didn't understand. I didn't see anything here. I didn't see Ms. Lemmons ask for anything. I didn't know what we were going to be approving. But I agree that maybe a vote of confidence that we agree with the program as it's being presented, and that's fine with me. I do have a question. The, these, will these seven that we're seeing right now, will that be the end of our list?
The end?
In other words, I think we had something like 13 originally, and we've installed some. I'm talking about the local historic marker program. Is this it, as far as, remember, we were talking about at some point that we needed to start developing additional sites and locations for, because this wasn't going to be the end of it. Is this pretty much our list right now, the end of the list?
This is the end of that original list, that original 12. But I've got a list of another, probably 18, that I've been compiling from other discussions that you all have had and from suggestions from residents. So once with the approval of the program, we'll move forward. And every year, the Historical Society will then process the application. Society will then process the applications, and they'll be able to fund additional sites. So this is really the end of the first twelve and the beginning of the next phase.
The, would we envision doing this as part of the budget program, or?
Yes, because how it would work is the city funds it, and the Historical Society operates it. So each year we'll come forward with the budget amount.
Okay. And Mr. Hoffman, your, the Historical Society's involved in creating the list or developing the list as well?
Right. There's two ways. One is that we could, you know, ask for people like, "This is a great site," but we can also have residents that own these properties that understand that they're historical and would really like one, then that would, you know, they'd work, and they'd do the application process that Karen spoke about.
I don't remember, but I thought in the past we had some kind of a map identifying these locations, these sites. It would be helpful in the future to have a map that identifies not just the ones that we've done and approved, but the ones that are potential sites. I'm a big believer of trying to spread the history of town across the area, not just focus it in the downtown, but there's many other sites that are historic as well. And I'm not sure, Hangman's Hill would be one.
I'm not sure everyone would see it.
But I'm not sure if that's something that we'd want to do, but that's an example. In any case, that would be helpful in the future when we, if, I don't know if you have one, or if it needs to be updated.
Yeah, we're working on one right now to put on the website, and then getting the geographic coordinates that we can do it through GIS.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
You. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapani?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Next is item number five, is to approve the name change, Clocks Sales Display Incorporated, file number seventeen zero zero eighty-four, CCM Lighting Services Holiday Display. Staff report, Mr. Licorice.
Yes, I've got Janina and Tom here, but let me go over it real briefly. It's just, again, we had to do this because of the name change of the people we use. Also, we want to keep, and it is budgeted for, the increase. If you remember last year during COVID, we got the board one time to increase to fifty thousand, to increase our Christmas display, and you all see how popular that that display was and stuff. So we are also asking in this to continue that for this year, and I believe it's up to fifty-six thousand displayed for the same type of, same type of lighting and programming, and even a little more for the town as far as Christmas goes. So this is kind of two-pronged, and Tom can answer anything about the displays. It is true that they're going to be real hard to get. I think we've got a lot of them secured already, because we did early, but, you know, the shipping, the trucking crisis, I think we've worked soon enough so we can get these. And Janina, anything about the, you know, the name change of person, she's also here. If you have any questions of him, so Tom and Janina are here, if you have any additional questions on this.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? The chair will detain a motion.
Motion approved.
Are there any commission comments?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Do we have any commission comments?
I was just going to ask city manager Licorice whether the fifty-six thousand is based on last year's budget or the actual expenditure?
Pretty much last year's budget with a little bit of increase-
That's good.
-with the increase for this year. We add that in, so we can kind, it's probably the same amount as equivalent to the cost of last year.
You're satisfied with that amount?
Yes, I believe so.
All right. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapani?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus.
Yes. Next is item number six, the award bid number twenty-two zero 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 seven dash B, dash AM Sidewalks Improvement. And, Mr. Licorice, we need a staff report?
Yeah, I have Tom and Janina. I think they're both tag teaming on this one, too.
Good evening, Tom Funtz, Public Works Director. This is to approve the utilization of Roger Management and Consulting for sidewalk work. This is the sidewalk priority list we had got approved by the board here back on July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. The bid come in, this company is out of Miami, and the final price was twenty-eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you.
And just a note on there, it is a little more than we had budgeted, we were due last time, but I'm sure, I don't want to, I wouldn't like to cut off any of the sidewalks we had planned before, so we'd hope to find the money to do the projects that we projected to do under the previous time when we came to you for sidewalks. So, we believe we'll have the money available, we'll find the money available to do the same amount of sidewalks and not cut back because of the increase in price.
Thank you. We're going to the public comments on this item. Do we have any public comments on this item? Here now, the chair will detain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Are there any commission comments?
I've got something there. Mr. Funtz, in the backup on page four, I'm looking to get a better idea, I know that we've talked about this, in terms of where the sidewalk improvements are going to be made.
Right.
Is that the non-highlighted list, or the highlighted list?
The non-highlighted list. Now, there are some additional ones. We had to move a couple off the original, number thirteen and number twenty-four. We were finally putting the final list together to put out the bid. We found a couple of small conflicts with some construction we're doing, so we just moved them down. So we actually added a couple from the bottom, number thirty-three and thirty-four.
Thirty-three and thirty-four.
Yeah, it's all on approved list, but thirty-three and thirty-four are now on this list, which we didn't think before we'd get done.
Gotcha.
By taking two other ones off near the top, so.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just for initial background, this is the one we saw in, when was that, September, correct? And we wanted to go out to bid for, so it was originally going to be a piggyback, and now it's not, essentially?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Vaticios, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Funtz, maybe Ms. Lewis needs to answer this. This is not the final award. There's still some homework that you need to do, is that correct, based on what I see in the backup?
No, it's the final award.
Okay. Well, what's, what's this for at the very beginning? I had it marked. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to peel back to where it was, because I was, basically, this is the notice of intent, but that was issued earlier, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was your administrative thing that you needed to do. Okay. I'm fine. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. What I'd like to say is, this is a fair bidding process. I am a little bit disappointed that all local companies, it was higher in the project, it was awarded to the company from Miami, so, but this is the way it is. So, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapani?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus.
Yes. Okay. Item number seven is the Holiday Boat Parade. It was referred from October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one regularization. Staff report.
Yes, this is our Holiday Boat Parade. It was pulled from the agenda, because one of the commissioners had concerns and wanted to see extra steps taken for manatees that are possibly in the bayou, and Chief Young, but Chief, Major Trill represented him tonight. I'll ask him to speak on, I asked Major Young to check and see what measures we could take to add a little bit more safety for manatees, and I'll have Major Trill give you what was found out.
Right. It's a city ordinance, it doesn't go by the state requirements, and it allows for approval for this reason. Obviously, the boats that have, the owners that have property in there already are allowed to go in there. We talked to FWC, they're willing to provide an officer and a boat before and during it to make sure everything goes smoothly, make sure it's idle speeds. They advise that there is no increased hazard, as long as they remain at idle speed through there, and they'll obviously go through beforehand to check for manatees, et cetera, but they said that that, at that low, just basically floating cruising speed, it's going to be fine.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comments on this item. Do we have any public comments on this item? Here now, the chair will detain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Commission comments. Major Drill, we've been doing these for a long time, probably twenty years. Do we have any issues with that?
Having issues with?
Manatees, or have we?
Not that I'm aware of it, and again, we spoke with FWC, it all looks good. Obviously, we can be out there to assist with the crowds, et cetera, so we should be good to go.
Yeah. I support our tradition, so we're going to go forward with that. Are there any commission comments?
Right.
Commissioner Vaticios?
And I may have missed this in some of the earlier action items that we've taken in a little while ago, given what's been going on with all the activity, but as far as the tree lighting, I know that with the boat parade, we have done the Sponge Docks tree lighting. We're still planning on having one there, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then-
I don't know, do we have, Karen, do we have a date on that yet, Karen, from the merchants? And the merchants are here.
We're talking about the city?
We'll get that date for you, but there is plan to be the same as last year, the Sponge Docks tree lighting.
Okay, and then, I know they're here, and I'm sure they're going to help-
December fourth.
Right, and then-
That's not related with this one here, though.
Pardon me?
That's not related with the boat parade.
No, I was just kind of trying to, well, it was last year, I believe, and I was just trying to get an idea of whether that could be done here. I don't have an issue with the boat parade, I think it's great. I'm just trying to figure out whether we're going to be doing something with the Christmas tree lighting at that-
We also have the Christmas tree lighting downtown, is what you're thinking of the Night of Snow place.
That'll come later, I guess, is what I'm getting at, these approvals. Okay, thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapani?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus.
Yes. Next is item number eight, internal audit, city clerk and collections department. Mr. Pulis, is Mr. Pulis here to present this item?
He might be in his office watching, there he is.
There he is.
Really?
He's just in time, Mr. Pulis. Please present your report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I don't have a presentation for the audit, I was just gonna, I presented it to you through the agenda a week or so ago, and I was going to answer any questions if you had any.
Yeah, we're going to go to public comments. Is there anything that you can tell us a little bit about it, so the audience will know?
Oh, sure, sure, sure. I did an audit on the clerk and collections department.
Yes.
I focused on what we call off-site transactions, or cash receipts off-site, which are transactions that the clerk doesn't have direct purview over. And I tested, so there's, I think, seven departments that have off-site transactions, so the library, cemetery, things like that. And they all, they tested all right at the transaction level. There was only three minor findings. One of them was that the clerk is not in the, as per what the charter states, is not in the cash receipts process for the recreation department and the golf course, and that's being remedied as we speak. But other than that, just some minor findings. Except, all the transactions tested out, didn't find any issues with those. The proper financial controls are obviously in place. It's a pretty, it's, the way the system's set up is, you have, you know, the transactions at, you know, at a department, and then you have the clerk in the middle, and then ultimately the finance department, and there's enough layers there to where any nefarious behavior or anything like that is mitigated. So, the proper controls are in place. That's basically the top line, what you need to know.
Mr. Pulis, thank you for completing the audit for the city clerks and collections department. We're going to go to the public comments, and we'll come back to you.
Okay, I thought, when I heard you mention my name, I thought you called me here.
Yes, yes. We're just going to go to the public-
I apologize, I'm late again.
No, that's fine, that's perfectly okay. Do we have any public comments on this item? We have no public comments, so the chair will detain a motion.
What is this motion for, Mayor? Would this be like a motion to-
This is the motion to accept the internal audit for the city clerk and collections.
Move to accept.
Second.
Mr. Pulis, would you please come to the podium again, please? We would like to ask you some questions, if you don't mind. First, we appreciate you, three findings and three observations that you came up with on your report. The off-site collections performed by the golf course and the recreation departments. The city clerk is not able to monitor those collections, collections made by these departments, and these departments under the direction of the city manager. I'd like to name the recommendations that we received from our city clerk, Mrs. Jacob. She would like to work with the city manager, yourself, the internal auditor, and to come up with steps to be in compliance with the charter. Any ideas what kind of steps you're talking about to take?
Myself or the clerk?
Well, I don't know if you already discussed it with our city clerk, or is any recommendations what steps to take?
Yeah, with the golf and the recreation department, in the future, I know they're in the process of procuring a new system, and when that happens, she'll be in the process at that point. Until that interim, I would suggest at least the clerk be copied on the batches, just like she is with the other departments. So, maybe not as intimately involved with the transactions, but at least then she satisfies, or the city satisfies the charter requirement that she be involved in the process.
Mrs. Jacob's also recommended to develop a citywide conflict of interest policy for all the employees. I agree we should have the kind of a policy. And I think the four charter employees, yourself, the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney, you guys ought to get together, come up with this policy, and bring it to be approved by the BOC. Any idea how long it will take to come up with some kind of a policy, this kind of a policy?
Shouldn't take long at all. That's pretty standard, the conflict of interest policy for transactions. They already have, like I mentioned in the report, they have a conflict of interest policy, the city does, as it relates to outside employment, so this would maybe piggyback on top of that one, or maybe we can combine just one kind of master conflict of interest policy and kind of list all these, all these conflicts, if you will, in one policy. So maybe we can consolidate a few policies together.
Thank you. That's all I have, and we'll turn it over to Commissioner Terapani.
I don't have any comments, Mayor.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Pulis, for your presentation. The report you sent us about a week ago is really well done. I did just have a couple of questions. I know it's in the charter, so we have to do it, but in the findings, it mentions that the rec department uses RecTrack, the golf course uses Pro Shop Keeper, and it mentions the possibility of, you know, moving them under one merchant vendor to comply with that. Are they concerned, or were you concerned with maybe like a loss of efficiency, because maybe, I don't know, maybe Pro Shop Keeper is great, and now they're worried about finding one merchant vendor to kind of meet all their needs when those are more specific?
No, absolutely, and right now, the process is pretty efficient. The deal with that is, and that's why I purposely went and tested the transactions in the rec department and the golf course. The controls are there, the financial controls are there. It's really just about, if we don't have a city charter, let's say we didn't have a city charter, there's no finding. So the financial controls are there, it's more having to do with just the city charter itself. It says that, you know, the clerk is the sole collector of revenue for the city, so for her not to be involved in those two departments in the collection process, the revenue collection process, that's where the problem's at. So in terms of whether it'd be less efficient, possibly, with the new system, but, you know, I didn't write the charter. I mean, she has to be involved in the collection process. The charter is unambiguous and clear in that regard. So sometimes, unfortunately, there are times where you give up some efficiencies in order to have greater controls, and that's the whole purpose of the charter, and the whole in order to have greater controls, and that's the whole, the whole purpose of the charter, and the whole purpose of having a clerk's office is, is basically another, another layer and another control. So, you have almost like, uh, for lack of a better term, a, a, a middleman in between, uh, the transaction and the Finance Department. So, will it be less efficient? Maybe. But like I said, that's, the charter's the charter.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that's, you know, that's where we, that's where we, we have to operate within, within those parameters.
Okay, and this is absolutely something you can, uh, kick the can on, 'cause I don't know if you can answer it right now, but as far as moving away from RecTrack and Pro Shop Keeper, and maybe moving under one vendor, like it's suggested here, in the City Clerk's response to the findings, is that, is there a timeline for that process? Is that something that, you know, we're under contract with them for X, Y, Z amount of time, or?
In terms of responding to, uh, uh, coming into compliance or, or responding to the, to the audit, I usually give them a year, but, um, and I'll follow up within, within a year, but-
Okay.
In terms, uh, and I, I think the City Manager or the clerk would probably be better able to answer that question, though. I, I don't know.
Okay. That's something you guys can just follow up on, if-
And I, I can answer that. The, the, the software is not gonna go away, because it's just the merchant vendor. So, the way the collections are, the clerk's office would have access to the, that software system and their reporting menu versus the way it is now. And like I said, it was nothing intentionally. I'm sure when they set up the programs, it was done for efficiency to upload the payments directly to the cash receipt software.
Okay. Cool. Well, thank you again.
Commissioner Vaticioudis, you have comments?
Thank you. I know that your recommendation is for the, the City Clerk to be involved in the Rec and Golf Course, uh, Golf Course, um, collections, and you pointed out that's, uh, required in the charter, not just for those two, but for everything that you've looked at. And I know the, uh, audits first focused on the, um, on the clerk's office, um, in regard to compliance. And, um, and maybe there's been some discussion here as far as the other departments, the Naveling, and those without, um, any software. Should there be any more in participation on the part of the clerk's office in those, or you're satisfied with what you see?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, I'm satisfied with that. Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
And that, and they comply in your interpretation with the charter?
Correct, yeah, the, 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 the control structure's there, there's, there's plenty of controls, and just the, the, just having a clerk there, provides that extra, that extra layer of, of separation between the transaction and ultimately the journal entry at the Finance Department level. So, uh, the controls are there, yes, yes.
I, I do know that the, um, uh, let's see, work with the City Clerk on ways to collaborate monitoring transactions and collection, that's finding number three. Number two, um, the conflict of interest, uh, policy, and I know the City Manager said he'd have something in by the end of the year. That's in the report. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's relatively easy to convert the policy that they have for the clerk's office now into a citywide policy, 'cause they always have one for the clerks, we just need to convert that-
For the offsite.
-to the city process, so that should be relatively easy.
Yeah. Well, whatever's needed, you'll have it in place by the end of the year.
Yes.
And then the other thing, I think, um, you mentioned a year, um, a year deadline for compliance.
That's, that's just when I follow up on it.
Okay. And then, um, and then what should we, since this is your first real audit for us, what, what should we expect as far as, are, are you going to come back in a year? Are you going to, um, is that the deadline? Is that what you have in plan to come back at, let's say, and, not necessarily in all of your audits, but in this particular one, you would come back in about a year to give us an update?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, actually, that's a, that's a, that's a good question. It's, it'll be kind of a, once, once you get a few audits under, under my belt, then it'll be kind of like a rolling type, uh, situation. So, every, you know, a few months or so, as I, as you know, I send you, you all an update about every month or so. And I, I'll have the, I'll send you, uh, basically, I have a tracking sheet, so I'll say, okay, remember I did this audit, uh, you know, like seven, eight months ago, or a year ago, whatever, whatever it is. And I'll, I'll, I'll list the findings and, uh, the recommendations and, and what the, the auditee did to, to get into compliance. So, yes, absolutely, it'd be kind of like on a rolling, on a rolling basis.
And since you work directly for the commission, it would be fair, if, not necessarily this one, but other audits, that we could check in with you as far as how things are progressing, maybe some that are a little more critical, that you think something has to be done much-
Oh, absolutely.
-more quickly, okay.
Absolutely.
Um, the other thing, too, is I know that, um, this particular audit required the charter and interpreting and what it means. I really feel strongly that, um, we've got some very talented staff. I read here, uh, the, Ms. Jacob's City Manager's been here for a long time. I think it's really fair game that y'all not just look at it from what the charter says, but also, is there something that can be recommended in the charter the next time the re, Charter Revision Commission comes around? I, I think that what happens when we, when we, um, convene a Charter Revision Commission, many times the staff comes forward and gives their ideas, but they're kind of like fresh.
Yeah.
And I'd like to be a little more proactive, and if there's some things, this, this would be a great value of you, uh, with the commission as well, if there's some things that you see as you go along through these audits that maybe the charter could be strengthened, changed some way. I, I think it's excellent to put that down now, rather than waiting till a Charter Revision Commission is, uh, convened, and then, and then they're asking cold, and you're sitting there scrambling around trying to figure out, uh, what would be good.
Right, no, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, Commissioner, and I'll, uh, I'll keep a, I'll keep a, a list of, of items that, um, that should be brought up at the, at the next Charter Review Commission, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pulis. Excellent.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticioudis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Thank you. We're now going to take a short break, we'll come back at 7:30 with the, to start with the ordinance and resolutions. And we begin our, uh, public hearing with item number fourteen. The ordinance 2021-25, the application 21-39, vacation of right-of-way at Hugh Avenue, north of Live Oak Street. Cotton, this is the first reading, and this is a quasi-traditional. The City Attorney will read the title, and she will explain the quasi-traditional process. City Attorney?
I believe the vacation of right-of-way is a legislative procedure.
It is?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. It was marked as a quasi, though.
Probably my fault. No worries.
Okay. Then we go to staff com, uh, staff report.
Would you like me to read the title now? Mr. Herman?
Yes, please read the title.
An ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning the right-of-way, R O W, of Huey Avenue, lying between the Pinellas Trail and East Live Oak Street, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for a reservation of easement, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing for an effective date by title only.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thank you again, this is ordinance 2021-25, uh, for application 2139, which is a vacation of right-of-way. Property in question here is highlighted in this red hatch area. It's an undeveloped, uh, right-of-way. It does, importantly, to our analysis, it does not connect through, and so you wouldn't be able to have a potential connection, pedestrian connection or bike connection up to the trail. We have no, um, no identified need for the right-of-way. All of our, uh, TRC members reviewed this. If the right-of-way is vacated, um, half will go to Duke Energy, and the other half will go to, uh, the actual applicant's property. And Duke Energy has requested that we reserve an easement, uh, to the benefit of their utilities that are in the right-of-way. Right-of-way is a little over twenty-one thousand square feet, sixty feet wide and unimproved. We talked about the easement for Duke Energy. This is a little closer, uh, view of the, the site. Uh, we've received letters of no objection, um, from all the, uh, utility providers in the area. We have not identified any current or planned stormwater utility facilities, uh, that require retaining the right-of-way, and we have letters of no objection from the other utility providers. Uh, this is under our standard review, this doesn't provide a sole access to an adjoining property. It's not needed to implement the circulation map of our, of our Tarpon Springs comprehensive plan, uh, the, the traffic element. Doesn't provide, uh, access to the water or the shoreline. With regard to our comprehensive plan policy, the city shall not vacate public right-of-way until it is determined that the public right-of-way is not required for present or future public use, including road utilities, et cetera. Uh, we do feel that that, uh, standard has been met in this case. Um, and the staff recommendation is to approve the vacation of this portion of Huey Avenue. And that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent, we're gonna go to public comments. Do you have any public comments on this item? Here none? The Chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, do we know what the applicant's plan to do with this piece of property?
Okay, so the applicant's here, I'll defer to them.
You want to, uh, explain, yes?
My name's Darren Taylor, this is nine eleven Revote Place, and I'd like to, um, ask that I could represent Larry Cotton. He's here, in the back of the room, he's my father-in-law. Okay, but I can answer any questions.
Question was, what you going to do with this piece of property that you, that you requested to have?
Parking.
For parking?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Duke Energy is okay as far as getting the, uh, half of the property, right?
Yes.
Do we have any representative from them here?
I don't believe we do, no.
We do not? Okay. That's all I have. Are there any other public comments on this item? Commissioner Terapany?
Uh, Ms. Vincent, just for the, uh, the public and the record, a couple of years ago, we passed an ordinance that no longer requires an applicant that's vacating a piece of right-of-way to pay for it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Say that again, Mr. Donovan.
A couple of years ago, the board, uh, passed an, uh, I guess it was an updated-
It was an update to the Land Development Code. We had a provision in the code that required the applicant to, to actually pay for one half of the value of the right-of-way, um, on advice of the City Attorney. We revise that that really is not appropriate anymore, and so that, we, that was amended about two or three years ago.
Foolish.
Commissioner Tchouambele, do you have a comment?
Yes.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm a little troubled by it, the same as Commissioner Terrapini. Maybe whenever this happened way back, maybe land value wasn't worth that much, but it's skyrocketing now. And this parcel represents nearly half an acre, 21,000 square feet. That's half an acre that we're talking about tonight. And the one question I have is, now, I do know that it'll go on the tax roll for Mr. Cotton.
Right.
And that's one thing. Does Duke Energy pay taxes?
I don't know the answer to that.
They should, right? Yeah, they're a utility. I don't really know. But did Duke Energy say that they wanted this property?
They requested an easement over it to their benefit since there are utility, there are power lines there.
Well, I see them.
But they didn't, I mean, they, I mean, by law, they will get one-half. So that's the way it's presented.
Right. Would part of that easement go into the property that we're giving to the private property owner?
I believe it does. Let me check the ordinance.
The reason why I'm asking is, it's, you know, I understand that it's going to be used for parking, but I'm just not sure how you're going to get parking in a thirty-foot-wide strip.
Right.
Is there a plan for that?
I haven't seen one yet, no. So that'll have to go through some sort of a site plan approval.
Okay, and that would have to comply with our code, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thirty-foot wide that we would be conveying?
For legal, one sec. So the exhibit four, the legal for these, exhibit B. No, it's actually a very small portion of it. It's just a triangular portion. I apologize. We probably should have put that into the agenda, into the presentation. It's a very small, triangle piece of property that their utilities are located in, up in the northernmost portion of the right-of-way.
But that thirty feet will still go to Duke Energy for whatever they do to that larger property, okay?
Yes.
I know that the application stated that the request is being made because the city's taken parking away as part of the Lowe's improvement. I would assume the Spruce Street improvement. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you know if the city paid damages to the property owner at that time?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. I mean, well, let me ask, is there any urgency to this vacating the right-of-way?
I currently have a code violation that's being, they're holding it up, or they've hit pause until this clears up. So, you know, I'm struggling for parking. I lost, on the north side, excuse me, on the south side of the building, on Live Oak, I lost access to all the parking on the front side of the building right there, which...
Can you describe how you're intending on putting parking? I'm just doing my due diligence as a commissioner. I'm just trying to understand, you know, how you do...
Yes, there's a parking lot, the property line, we have parking up all the way to the property line right there, okay? An additional thirty feet could be utilized completely for parking. I mean, it could be, or as much as we could pave, or as much as we'd be allowed to, with our setbacks, okay? But that gives us about an additional sixty feet, I believe, that we would be able to park on that we previously didn't have.
Do you, but do you have a layout or anything that you have already in hand, that's some idea of how you're going to do this? I guess what I'm getting at is, I'm trying to get an idea of why we're doing this. I mean, this is a half an acre of land. I understand what Commissioner Terrapini's mind is. I'm of the same mind. I really want to help a business, but I also don't want to do it just because, you know, you say you need parking, but then after you submit a plan to the planning department, they have a hard time with it. And it's not realistic. You have to submit whatever improvement you do on that site. And just from my experience, I'm having a hard time visualizing how you do parking with the thirty feet, just as a broad stroke of saying that we're going to use it for parking. You're going to complement the area that you already have? In other words, you just need additional width?
I need additional parking spaces.
Spaces?
I need additional parking spaces, yes, sir.
All the way to the back end of your property?
Wherever I can get. If you can, if you look at the picture behind you, the white that you're looking at is building. I've got very limited parking in everything on the far south end of the building. When they've made the V come down at the bottom of Live Oak, you see right there? That used to be a straight street with all parking to the south, you know, on the whole south border of my building, of our building, excuse me. So, yes, that is currently being used for parking all down the west side of the building. That would just expand that parking lot and give me additional spaces. So, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a, and if I were required to, you know, or if I knew that I should have a plan in hand to, you know, I'd be happy to do that.
But you don't have a plan now?
Other than meeting with my...
Other than you have an idea of what you want to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would assume what you're probably talking about is trying to mirror the head-end parking off of this, you know, something very similar here.
Correct, yeah.
You, just based on your experience, do you think that might work?
I mean, he's got, you're seeing parking here, so, I mean, pardon, you see the, you know, the building edge is here. So, I think, yeah, you've got some opportunities there. You're going to deal with stormwater and additional impervious. We'll just have to get through that process.
Yeah, that's another issue, but, all right. I want to be fair, you know, I think we've got some work that we need to do in our, at least at this point, given the value of land, and I'd like to see some things done in the future. I mean, from my perspective, I understand what you're trying to do. I just hope it works. I'm not thrilled with giving up a half an acre of land without getting anything in return. But, in fact, it is going to go on the tax roll, so, I mean, that's of some value. That's all I have here. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes, thank you. Next is item fifteen. It's fifteen A, fifteen B, and fifty C. Fifteen A is quasi-traditional, fifty B is legislative, fifteen C is also quasi-traditional. These items are related, will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. So, the fifteen A is the application twenty-one dash one sixteen and twenty-one dash one seventeen, three sixty-nine and three seventy-nine, Jerru Boulevard, Stam, the ordinance 2021-21. This is the annexation first reading. The city attorney will read the title and will explain the quasi-traditional process.
An ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing point, zero point three six acres more or less of real property located at three sixty-nine and three seventy-nine Jerru Boulevard, lots three and four, Block B, Highland Grove Manor subdivision, located on the south side of Jerru Boulevard, approximately 140 feet east of Ann Clot Road. Applications number twenty-one dash one sixteen and twenty-one dash one seventeen, providing for findings and providing for an effective date by title only. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the Board of Commissioners wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest with regard to either applications fifteen A, B, or C this evening? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak on these items, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So sworn. I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll first have the staff presentation.
Thank you. This is applications twenty-one, one sixteen, and twenty-one, one seventeen. These are being run together, even though they are two separate applications for annexation. The project, property consists of two lots on Jerru Boulevard that join the current city boundary, and they do wish to build on these lots with two single-family homes. And that is requiring them to connect to our utilities, which is prompting the required annexation. So, we have three actions. The first is the annexation of the property itself. The second is a future land use map amendment, which simply reassigns the property from the Pinellas County residential urban to the city of Tarpon Springs residential urban future land use category. And then we have the rezoning from the Pinellas County designation of R four, which is one, two, and three family, to the proposed, to the city of Tarpon Springs, R seventy, which is one and two-family residential. As stated, the intent is that each lot will be developed with a single-family home. And then there's just kind of the surrounding land use. You have industrial to the south, and then residential. This area is a mix of one and one, two, and there's actually even some fourplexes and quadplexes along Jerru Boulevard that are unincorporated county. Under review criteria for annexation, we don't find any issues. We're not creating an enclave. We have the ability to serve the property, and they are connecting to our utilities, which does prompt the annexation for being in the county to residential urban with the city. And the rezoning is actually a little less intense than what would be allowed in Pinellas County. So, it is also consistent with that review criteria. And the staff recommendation is to approve all three of the ordinances, ordinance twenty-one, 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 twenty-two, and twenty-three, annexation, land use, and rezoning. Planning and zoning board did review this at their October eighteen meeting and recommended approval. There were no public comments, and with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Applicant or the applicant's representative here? Would either of you like to make a presentation this evening? Okay. Would the Board of Commissioners have any questions for the applicants, to which I would need to swear them in and have them come up to the podium? No? Okay. Do the applicants have any questions for staff at all this evening? Okay. With that, are there any public comments in favor of the application? Seeing none, are there any public comments in opposition to the application? So seeing none, I will now close the quasi-judicial proceeding.
Thank you. The chair will detain a motion on the application fifteen A, the application twenty-one dash one sixteen, and twenty-one dash one seventeen.
Motion to approve.
Can we just separate that, though, by ordinance? Since there are three separate?
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-21.
Thank you.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes. Next is the fifteen B, which is the ordinance twenty, twenty-one dash twenty-two, future land use. City Attorney, please read the title.
An ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for point, zero point three six acres more or less of real property located at three sixty-nine and three seventy-nine Jerru Boulevard, lots three and floor, Block B, Highland Boulevard, Highland Grove Manor subdivision, located on the south side of Jerru Boulevard, approximately 140 feet east of Ann Clot Road, from the Pinellas County land use designation, RU, residential urban, to city of Tarpon Springs land use designation, RU, residential urban. Applications number twenty-one dash one sixteen and twenty-one dash one seventeen, providing for findings and providing for an effective date, read by title only.
Thank you. That already had been discussed. Need a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-22, future land use.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes. Next is the fifteen C, the ordinance twenty twenty-one, dash twenty-three. This is the rezoning portion.
An ord...
Go ahead. I'm just going to ask you to read the title.
An ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the city of Tarpon Springs for zero point three six acres more or less of real property located at three sixty-nine and three seventy-nine Jerru Boulevard, lots three and floor, Block B, Highland Grove Manor subdivision, located on the south side of Jerru Boulevard, approximately 140 feet east of Ann Clot Road, from Pinellas County zoning designation, R four, one, two, and three-family residential, to city of Tarpon Springs zoning designation, R seventy, one and two-family residential. Applications number twenty-one dash one sixteen and twenty-one dash one seventeen, providing for findings and providing for an effective date, read by title only.
We need a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-23 rezoning.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes, thank you. Next is item number sixteen. This is the application twenty-one dash one oh five, law site engineering. The ordinance 2021-18, this is the annexation, nineteen fifty-four, South Pinellas Avenue. This is the first reading. This is also quasi-traditional. We're only going to be discussing the ordinance 2021 dash eighteen, the annexation part. The B, which is the future land use, and the rezoning has been deferred, as been announced earlier.
City Attorney, if you please read the title.
An ordinance, number twenty, twenty-one dash eighteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing zero point three acres more or less of real property located at nineteen fifty-four, South Pinellas Avenue, on the west side of South Pinellas Avenue, approximately 280 feet north of Klosterman Road. Application twenty-one dash one zero five, providing for findings and providing for an effective date, read by title only. As this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, the same procedures will apply as I had read earlier, and the hearing will be based upon competence, excuse me, competent substantial evidence. Anyone wishing to speak on this application that has not otherwise been sworn in, could you please stand to be sworn? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and have the staff report.
Thank you. This is application twenty-one dash one oh five for property on South Pinellas Avenue. The request is to, the full request is for annexation, and then, of course, assigning land use and zoning. We had an advertising issue with the land use and zoning, so we will be bringing that back at a later date. They do want to move forward. Again, this is a property where they are seeking to abandon septic and hook up to city utilities, so that's compelling the annexation. You can see the property here. It's actually, you're probably familiar with it. It was the Garrigan Real Estate Office formerly. My understanding is now they want to, I believe you have a small medical or dental office there. It does have a split land use and zoning in Pinellas County. We will rectify that when we get to the land use and zoning portion. There's a residential lot that connects to Highland that's undeveloped, and then it actually fronts on South Pinellas Avenue. And again, we're just north of Klosterman, on the west side of South Pinellas. Let's see. Again, just a more of a close-up of the property. My pointer just decided to quit. There we go. Again, showing the, kind of the split... Again, showing the, kind of the, the split land use and zoning in the, in the county. Again, we'll be bringing that back for discussion later, so I'm going to skip through those slides. Again, under our review criteria for annexation, we do have the ability to serve, it's contiguous to the current city boundary, and it's consistent with our review criteria for annexation. Staff recommendation is to approve the annexation, and then, again, we will bring back the land use and zoning map amendments a bit later. Planning and zoning board did review this and recommended approval. There was no public comment at that meeting, and with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for staff? Mayor?
Yes. Ms. Vincent, the applicant was to connect to our sewer service. Is he going to connect to the water sewer, water service as well?
I believe they may all, but they're probably, they may already be connected to, to-
Our water?
To our water. So, no, I, they, what's forcing the annexation is the sewer.
Okay. That's all I have.
Are there any other questions for staff?
I do.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Ms. Vincent, or, I was just trying to look at this. Are we talking, is there two parcels here or just one?
If you, yeah, if you turn around and if you look at the map behind you, it's actually two parcels, so there's a parcel here.
I, I see that.
And then there's the par, this is a residential parcel here, so it is two parcels.
Yeah, I think there's one slide before that, that, it, so the zoning on the one would be an R four, and the other one would be a commercial, C two?
That's what, that's what it currently is. I mean, what we're proposing is to put the entire parcel into neighborhood business to get it under a uniform land use and zoning, so it's a little bit of an upzone on one side and a downzone on the other.
Would that allow the residence still to be put into that one residential lot?
If they wanted, yes, you could put a residence there if you wanted to.
By right, under the neighborhood business?
I believe so. I need to, I would need to check.
I mean, it's okay if this is what's being requested, I don't have an issue.
Right.
I just don't want to, I mean, I'd like to see a residence put there if they're not going to use it for business, that's all, so.
Well, if, if it did get used for some sort of, you know, business use to support the front, you know, the front parcel, they would absolutely have to have sufficient buffering a lot for that, that adjacent residential.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Is the applicant here, either Northside Engineering, Inc., or a member of the Gagarian Family Trust or representative? Seeing, seeing no one, are there any members of the public wishing to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
Thank you. We need a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, annexation nineteen fifty-four South Pinellas Avenue.
Second.
Are there any commission comments? Seeing none. Ms. Jacobs, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Next is number seventeen, resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four, the Application twenty-one dash one fifteen, conditional use, private club at twelve fifty-four South Pinellas Avenue for the American Legion. This is also quasi judicial. See your attorney, if you please read the title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving Application number twenty-one dash one fifteen, requesting conditional use approval to allow for a private club at twelve fifty-four South Pinellas Avenue in the NB Neighborhood Business Zoning District, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. This is also a quasi judicial proceeding, so the same quasi judicial procedures will apply. Anyone who has not already been sworn in who wishes to speak on this application, if you could please raise your right hand to be sworn in?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn. We'll have the staff presentation.
Thank you. This is Application twenty-one, one fifteen. This is for, for the American Legion, this is a conditional use application. This is a subject site. This is a office, office complex, if you will, on South Pinellas Avenue, directly in front of the, the Green Dolphin condominium complex. And the, the request is for a conditional use for a private club. This is the American Legion. The land use is commercial general, the zoning is neighborhood business. In this district, it, this, clubs, fraternal organizations, and things of that nature do require conditional use. Generally, a little, about the operations of the, of the site, generally, they're open from eleven AM to eleven PM. Meetings and events are in the evenings and on weekends. They have regular monthly meetings, fundraising activities, support group meetings for veterans, meeting space for the Coast Guard Auxiliary, as well as general community engagement activities. They're generally not open to the public, so non-members have to be a guest of a member. And here's the, this is the overall site, so this is the building within the complex that they are seeking to, to utilize. The, there's, I think the biggest point of discussion probably is, you know, obviously there's residential directly here, and there's really no barrier, visual barriers between this complex at all, and the, and the residential back here. Under our conditional reviews criteria, we do find that as condition that it is consistent with the Land Development Code and our review criteria, it's compatible with the area. Again, it's a bit of an infill site. They're not going to be changing the exterior, they'll be occupying the, the building as is and doing an internal build-out to suit their needs. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and should not adversely affect impact historical or environmental resources. I will say a brief note about adjoining property values. The, the, the feedback that we received from the public, and we did get a little bit from, from Green Dolphin, is that they very much, they weren't opposed to the use, but they wanted a fence, a, you know, a barrier there between that complex and the residential. My understanding is the American Legion has agreed to that, and it is a condition of approval. So staff recommendation is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four for conditional use, approval for operation of a private club in the Neighborhood Business Zoning District. There are two conditions with the following conditions. We did, the expires within one year if the use is not implemented, if you will, and then all building permits must, must obtain all necessary building permits for the property, if changes are being made. I talked a little bit about the public notice and the comments that were received. The planning and zoning board did review this on October eighteenth. They, they recommended approval and added the condition regarding, after the discussion, that the applicant shall erect a privacy barrier slash fence as allowed by the Land Development Code along the west property line of the Tarpon Bend Professional Center. So that is an added condition of approval. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for staff? None? Does the applicant have any questions for staff? Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Now I'm asking you to get up.
Good evening. Nice to talk to you all. I just want to say that it's been a long road, so we're finally here. I hope that we could able service the veterans that they've been doing for over a hundred years, and also a little bit of a change where we could then be more of a service to other volunteers that provide service for people who need it, can share our space so they could have meetings. So I think that's about all I have to say. And we did meet, and we made an arrangements that we would meet on a monthly basis with the Green Dolphin. So if there was any complaints, hit it right off the bat. And we did have plans to put a fence there anyway, so that's, that's not a problem for us. That's it, for me.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
No.
No?
Hope to see yous there, gentlemen. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in favor of this application? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to this application? There are none. I will then go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay. The Chair will detain a motion for the Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-four.
Motion to approve with the conditions set forth by, set forth by staff in the staff report?
Second.
Okay. We're now going to the commission comments. What I'd like to say is, this is a great place for our veterans to, to gather, to sense allies, to get information about services and benefits and programs that are available to them. I am a hundred percent behind it. Any other comments? Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the American Legion. You guys do a great job for our community. You guys do a great job, really with all the events, your First Fridays, everything you guys touch kind of seems to turn to gold, so thank you all for your service, and thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you. Any other commission comments?
Just, you know, veterans have always been an important part of our community, but it seems like there's a much greater prominent role now that we see, and, and I'm just glad, to be honest with you, I'm glad to see so many American Legion members here tonight. I remember this from years ago, and there, it was really, really hard, maybe two or three people, but I'm, I'm very happy to see that you've got a viable club, and, and congratulations on your new location. Thank you.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Good luck to you. Next is item number eighteen, the ordinance two, twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, the Application twenty-one dash one fourteen, Land Development Code Amendment, VA frame signs. This is the first reading. See your attorney, please read the title.
Number twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article eleven, Section one ninety-one point zero nine, A-frame slash sandwich board signs, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thank you. Again, this is an ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, amending our sign code specific to our A-frame sign regulations. This was at the request of the board to revisit this and add in, the major change would be allowing the, the, the use of plastic for the frame materials as part of the sign makeup. And so that has been added back in. There are two other minor changes. We, we did insert regarding the signed faces, allowing for changeable copy shall be limited to chalk boards, dry erase boards, or changeable face inserts. That's all standard as before. It just says that are professionally printed and integrated. That was a recommended change. And then, just also adding that nothing can be affixed to the A-frame sign structure. That was standard, that was already in the language, or the face inserts. So we're trying to eliminate things being tacked onto the signs, and they kind of become, can become shabby looking when that happens. So that is the bulk of the changes, those are shown in, strike through underline in your agenda backup. Planning and zoning board did review this. One member of the public spoke in support of the proposed changes. The board did vote to approve the ordinance, but they did have two recommendations, which at this point, we haven't worked into them, we can discuss them this evening. One would be to add a provision that advertising on A-frame signs must be for the property owner or lessy business on the property. I think what they're getting at is, and I think this is already covered in our sign code, you have to be advertising for the business that you serve. You can't advertise for an off-site business. That would be an off-site sign, so I really don't think we need to address that. I think the sign code appropriately addresses that as it is today. And the second was add a provision that no profanity or language that is outside community standards be allowed on A-frame signs. And for that discussion, if you want to take, take that up, I'm going to defer to the city attorney. So with that, I'll answer any questions that, other questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. We are now going to the public comments.
Hi, I'm David Gauschman, seven thirty-five, Dodekines. I just want to say, just in a couple of months, I think we've seen an improvement on the signs on the street. I know a lot of people did change the plastic to metal, they got new signs, but some of the plastic signs that have been out there, I think people are cleaning up, and I think it's just something the city might have to enforce, in the sense that if, like I said before, it's not the frame, it's what's on the frame that makes the difference, and we just keep track and watch people and stay on up. I think it's a necessary change to go back to allowing whatever frame there is and, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello, my name is Peter Rowan, two six one Cleveland Place. I'm currently a student at Saint Petersburg College in Public Policy Program. We're doing a case study project right now, and part of that case study is to come in and comment on a first reading. This first reading, the plastic signs, it may seem like a smaller issue to some, but it could damage the view of Tarpon Springs, especially in nicer areas or different areas. Like in downtown Tarpon Springs, the new signs that are being put up for historic areas, it could be damaged by the view of a plastic sign that's not as nice, and just the, working on making sure that these signs are in good working order, and pleasing to the eye is going to be tougher for whoever decides to go, or whoever has to go and enforce this code on these businesses. So just making sure that it is more clear in this new writing that you guys are doing as to what can be on these plastic signs, how the frames can look, and what exactly is good work in order. That is all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Do we have any other public comments on this item? Here none? We need a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance on the first reading, twenty twenty-one dash fourteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We're now going to the commission comments. I initiated this land development amendment of the A-frame signs because I've received phone calls from our local businesses, and, and the president of the Merchant Association, Mr. Gauschman, who just spoke a minute ago, regarding the A-frame signs because, and the complaint was that the new ordinance that we created also created a hardship to our local businesses, so this is why we are doing this right now, to, to make sure that the plastic frame material will be included, as long as the, the signs are look presentable, more uniform, and pleasing to the eye, and as the, Mr. Gauschman says, there are, the Z frames will look much better than they were before. I think our business people, they're already taking it serious because they know that's for their own good. By doing that, it's good for the tourist, it's good for all of us, so I appreciate, David, if you please tell everybody that we really appreciate their efforts. Thank you. Any other commission comments? Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to touch on this one because I'm going to vote against it, and I voted against the original ordinance as well. I just think when it comes to A-frame signs, it's kind of a waste of our time to approach businesses and tell them what they can and can't put out, and I, I think it's a waste of our code enforcement, I think it's a waste of businesses' times. So I'm going to vote against it, but that, that being said, I just want to do, say I'm really appreciative of staff's effort on this. I think they did a really good job initially of holding all those public engagement meetings, and then trying to adapt it to, to meet the feedback that we were getting, as well as the board. So I, I understand why you'd want to move forward with this one, but I'm going to stay consistent and vote against this.
Thank you. Commissioner Tukers, any comments?
No, I had conversations with Mr. Gauschman, the Tarpon Springs Merchant Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and I think they're all supportive of this change. I think this would have come up sooner, Mayor, but out of respect of you being gone, and you the one that brought this up, I think we waited until you got back to set it, bring it up here at the first opportunity, so that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
No.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes. Okay. The next item, which is the nineteen, the ordinance twenty- Okay, the next item, which is the 19th, the ordinance 2021 dash 24, has been deferred to December 7th. Already has been announced. So, we're going to go back to the agenda where we left off. And we're going to go to item number nine. Okay, item number nine is the award file number 220011 dash N dash JL Resiliency Plan Support Service. Staff report?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and have Renee explain this again. This was a grant that we have and we're moving forward with it. So, Renee, if you'd just give them a brief update of the grant and what we're doing.
The city received a $50,000 grant from the Florida Department of State, Division of Historical Resources to develop a a resiliency plan for our two historic districts, specific to, you know, how do we deal with flooding and long-term preservation and those types of impacts? So, the Board did approve the grant agreement with the state back in August, and we have negotiated an agreement with, directly with the University of Florida Historic Preservation Program to perform this work for us. So, what is in front of you tonight then is the actual agreement within scope with the University of Florida to move forward with this grant work.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? We need a motion?
Motion to approve award file number 220011 dash N dash JL.
Thank you. Are there any Commission comments?
Second.
Oh, second. Do we have any Commission comments? Commissioner Chicas?
Ms. Vincent, I'm really thrilled that you've got another university involved in helping with the city. And I do know that the, I don't recall her name, but she's already involved in talking to other people in the community and setting meetings up and things of that nature.
Yes.
And I'm very happy to see that. Also, I'm very happy to look at item 3.1, I think it was item D, about coordinate with Pinellas County over including the Union Academy data
Right.
into this project and making sure that we don't lose that as well as the Greek Town Heritage District and our traditional historic district. The only, maybe this isn't a fair question, but, and I don't know if you've been talking to Tom Schofield, I know that-
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you think what he'll have is going to be available for consideration in this report?
Absolutely. We're definitely coordinating with them. We're sharing data because it's just, you know, we're running kind of lockstep. They're in the same grant cycle we are, so.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we are now going to item number 10. Lemon and Shattuck Street paving and stormwater alternatives. Staff report?
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. For this item, I'm presenting options for the Board's consideration to address proposed roadway improvements on portions of Lemon Street and Shattuck Street. Staff has been working with our consultant on the design of these two streets with the intention of replacing the surfaces in kind, which is a combination of brick and asphalt. However, based on feedback from previous and similar projects, we wanted to bring this back to the Board to present some design options for discussion and request approval to proceed with one of the options. So I'll summarize them briefly. The first option would be to leave it as is, and that means reconstructing Shattuck as a brick street, as it currently is, and reconstructing Lemon Street as an asphalt street, as it currently is, with no new stormwater infrastructure. That would be option one. Option two would be to replace all the asphalt on Lemon Street with brick, and then of course leave Shattuck as brick with no new stormwater infrastructure. Option three would be to replace the street surfaces in kind. This is again that combination of asphalt and brick, but add in the new stormwater infrastructure. And the final option, option four, would be to replace all the street surfaces with brick and add in the new stormwater infrastructure. I provided the estimated costs of each option in the backup. The design work on these, on this, these streets is at about 40% complete right now, so it's a good place to stop and check in with the Board. So depending on the option you select today, we should be able to finish up the design in a few months and get the project out to bid hopefully early next year. So that's the summary of this item. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson, we're going to go to public comments on this item.
I need a protest, 901 Bay Shore Drive. Is the city still saving the granite curbing when we do streets or we tear it up? Are we still saving that and stockpiling the granite because we can't get it anymore? We used to. I've spoken to the city manager about it a couple of years ago. Are we still doing that because you can't buy it anymore?
Yes.
Okay. If they have to tear up the granite curbing on any of these streets, if there is some, let's make sure we get it because today, I don't know if it was all granite or not, but the street by the toll station between North Pinellas Avenue and Athens Street, they were tearing up curbing today to do a driveway and they were dumping it in a dumpster. It wasn't being saved. And if it's granite, we need to get it because we like to use it in our historic districts and for things, and you just can't buy it anymore. So, we need to look at that and make sure that we save it. It's priceless.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Jackie Turner, 792 Chesapeake Drive. I just wanted to urge you as someone who lives on a brick street that was redone a few years ago and didn't have the stormwater drainage done at the time that the bricks were redone. Please go for option four. If you're going to do it, let's do it right. I love that we're keeping the bricks. Let's make sure the infrastructure for our town is taken care of. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Here none? Okay. The Chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve option four?
Second.
Okay. We go to Commission comments. I also support option four to rebuild both streets as a brick streets with the stormwater infrastructure on Lemon Street. Mr. Robinson, question that I have is, what about water and sewer? Do they need to be rebuilt, replaced, or what?
Mayor, so when we started this project, we did check in with utilities on this, and they, at that time, said they didn't need to be replaced. I think, you know, that was quite a while ago when we started the project. I intend to, as we go through this process again, to circle back with them and make sure that is still the case. If there is an interest and a desire to replace some of the water and sewer utilities, I do know Public Services has funds set aside for that. So if we did decide to change that, we could do that.
Thank you.
We still have the opportunity to do that.
I support to do this right the first time, so we'll have to come back and do that later. And the other question that I have is, why are we not reconstructing Lemon Street all the way to South Pinellas while we were stopping halfway?
I wasn't part of setting up the project boundary. It was established to be from Bath to South Spring. So I really don't know the answer to that. I took the project over and we're trying to carry it through based on these conditions.
Okay. Well, now we have the American Rescue Plan and funding will become available for utilities. Probably it's a good time to look at that, to finish the whole thing. Mr. Licorice, do we need to, what's the process if we're going to look at the whole street? Does it need to be repaired?
First of all, we need to approve this and get this phase done. We still don't know if streets are going to be involved in that. So, I think the reason why we did this was the condition of the road in that section. So I don't think we need to do the other now. So I would say we'd approve this, and if we decide to do that later, we do it later.
Okay. Well, before the project is finished, maybe wait, look at the other section of Lemon Street, make sure we do it, the whole thing. Now we have funding available. Let's do that. Any other comments? Commissioner Terapany?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm definitely in support of option four, but I have a similar thought as you, Mayor. If we're going to tear up the whole street, that I would definitely, given that that's an old part of town, I'm sure we have clay pipes in there. You can see in some of the pictures the manholes. So Bob, I would definitely want to, while we're tearing up the whole street, look into that. I would support those utility upgrades for sure. Last thing I want to do is put in a beautiful, brand-new brick street and then have a pipe burst or, you know, a sewer line crack or something like that. So, I'm definitely in support of the utility upgrades as well. My sense is that the Lemon Street from Bath to Pinellas Avenue is in fair condition, given that it was upgraded not long ago, Mayor. When they did the Lemon Street, you know, project on the other side of alternate 19, it carried all the way. You know, carried across alternate 19 to Bath, I think. And then, as it relates to the bricks that are existing in Lemon, my sense is, given the quotes, that some of those bricks are going to be recaptured. Do you know that to be true, Bob?
We typically try to recapture. We usually assume about 30% or so is able to be recaptured on Lemon Street. In this case, these are all, have been asphalted over. Often, it's just more, it's cost prohibitive to try to recover those and clean and scrape the asphalt off. Shattuck is mostly brick now, so we're going to try to recapture probably 60 to 70% of those. It's usually, you know, the damaged ones have to be tossed out or recycled or disposed of, but
Sure.
that's about how we do it.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the estimates are a little bit surprising, but I think it probably goes to show you some of the increased costs in asphalt and concrete and other things like that. Brick still remains pretty affordable, it looks like. So, I'm all in for option four, but definitely want to check on the utilities.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Robinson. Yeah, I kind of had a similar feeling to Commissioner Terapany when I saw the difference between option three and option four, especially after, I remember when we were talking about Court Street, the difference between asphalt and brick was hundreds of thousands of dollars. Is there a reason? I mean, it almost just seems like too good to be true that it's only a difference of, you know, what, $80,000?
You know, I had to take the map out and plot out the difference. Court Street, believe it or not, was about 30% larger in terms of surface area than this section of Lemon Street is. So, it was a bigger project, had more bricks, and bricks are more expensive. So this is a smaller project, at least the Lemon Street part is, in terms of scale. That kind of explains that difference.
Okay. Yeah, I absolutely support option four. I don't think it makes any sense to replace any street, pretty much, without improving drainage. And the fact that we can make it brick for such a good value, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vadikiotis, comments?
Thank you. I'm laughing at the light being on, Mayor. I didn't know you had that control. The, Mr. Robertson, the, just looking at some of the photos, I suspect that the brick's still under the asphalt. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we going to do any recovery of those?
Well, as I said, it's very difficult to do that. We could probably try to, we probably put it in the contract for the contractor to recover as many as possible. But often, it's cost prohibitive, like I said, to try to spend the labor trying to clean the asphalt off of the bricks. You can't just flip them over either because they lay unevenly.
We've got some time before we get to breaking ground, I'm sure. You've got to go out to bid and everything. I, you know, I think we ought to have a little bit of a discussion on the brick. I don't know where they go once the contractor pulls them out. If we can't use them, where do they go? And I do know that, and I don't want to get into a free-for-all with our residents or anything like that, but I do know that our residents use these. They love to get them. And and I would love to try and figure out some way, and I don't even know how many we're going to get, but if it's most of that road, that's going to be a lot of brick, to give our residents an opportunity to pick some of these up and clean them themselves for some of their backyard projects and stuff. These are going to be your original brick roads from, I don't know if we can do that legally. I don't know, but at least just some conversation on that. The sidewalks, that's not included in this project?
Correct.
Okay. What are the conditions of the sidewalks?
I believe they're acceptable. The project was just focusing between the curbs, basically.
Okay. And they're going to do a survey on this, or no?
Certainly.
Survey on the street, yeah, because of the-
Oh, you mean a public information survey?
No, no, for stormwater. No, not public, for stormwater. And how do you see this stormwater? Is it going to all head down to the bayou? Like it's been historically done?
Yes.
Okay. Do you still have your photographs in your presentation? Can you put that up?
I don't have the presentation dialed in.
That's all right. If you look at it, it's very similar to what we had in Tarpon Avenue, where it's been asphalt above asphalt and bad asphalt. And the curb seemed to be disappearing. In other words, the roadway is almost at the same level as the curb. It's certainly not down. Are we going to be either lowering the road or raising the curb on this?
The answer is yes to both.
Okay.
Because as you say, we build up the asphalt, so the elevations are going to be reestablished. Curb lines are, excuse me, curb, elevation curb reveals are going to be reestablished, so you can have proper stormwater conveyance along the curb lines. The granite curbs are going to be removed and retained as part of the project. We store those typically at the yard waste facility and replace with type D concrete curbs, or Fs, it's type F curbs. So that, you know, to answer your question, yes.
We're not going to reset the granite curb back?
No.
We're going to go with concrete?
Yes.
I'm not sure. I mean, I'd like to ask the Commission how they feel about that. I would prefer to try and retain the granite curbing if we could.
Problem is that when we try to do that, it's, they're rather unwieldy and often they get broken. And, you know, you get the best contractor in the world, we're not going to be able to replace them in kind, the ones that are broken, the ones that are, ones that were damaged. So, you wind up with a mix, mishmash of concrete and granite. I'd rather see it as a consistent, clean design where we recover the granite and use it for other purposes.
You know, the only thing is, I mean, when you restore historic homes, maybe you modernize and things, but there's some parts of it that you like to keep the original, even if it's not doing all the drywall and leaving part of the, whatever's behind the drywall exposed to show what it was like. I still think that we ought to maintain some parts of our streets with granite curb just to demonstrate what it was like in the old days. It is in the historic district. It's just a thought. I hate to just keep going to all modern curb and then we just continue stacking our granite curb. What would we, what would we use it for? I mean, I'm not, I wasn't crazy of the application of granite curb on Lemon Street for whatever it was, planters or tree wells or whatever it was that it was used for. I think we ought to, if we've got them, I think we need to maybe put them back in use, whether it's here or maybe a downtown district, Court Street, when we get to that, something. Anyway, I think option four at this point, and maybe that would be some additional discussion that, I'm not sure how the city manager would handle it, and I'm not even sure if the Commission would be interested, but it's certainly important to me to try and keep this as authentic as we can from years past. So, I'm all for option four. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask, Mr. Robertson, I don't have, just the timing on when we would be going out to bid on this and the designs and everything. Go ahead. Do you have a timetable on this one?
Well, we're at 40% design, so given the input from the Board tonight, we'll get the designer back to work on it. I'm figuring it's probably going to take a few months to get that design finalized. If we had the utility work in, add another couple of months. So, I would say probably early next year, maybe early spring, targeting for putting it out certainly this fiscal year.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll talk to the city manager about the rest of stuff. Thank you.
Okay, next item is number 11, authorized settlement of deliquid rollover dumpster account, Midcoast Construction Enterprise and Jack Fullford on, at 100 the Decanese Boulevard. City Attorney, you want to present these?
Yes. So, the, in about-
Yes, so, the, in about two thousand nineteen, Midcoast was hired by the city to perform work on the city's Marina project. During that construction project, pilings were removed and needed to be disposed of, and the city's preferred dumpster contractor was contracted with to perform the work and have the dumpster on the property. On January third of two thousand twenty, that account was closed and had not been paid by the contractor. And, and the city attorney's office contacting the contractor in an attempt to, to have them close the account and pay the delinquent fees, it was found that there needed to be an adjusted balance, as there were a couple of charges that were associated with the account that did not need to be on there. So the total balance that was due and owing was eighty-nine-hundred, sixty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents. In the city attorney's office speaking with the contractor, there is some dispute as to some legal issues with regards to the amount and whether it's due and owing, and so the parties have negotiated a proposed settlement, and the city attorney's office, as well as the city manager, asking for your authorization to enter into a settlement agreement to close the delinquent account for a sum of five thousand dollars. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? We need a motion?
Motion to approve the settlement for delinquent rolloff dumpster account, Midcoast Construction Enterprise LLC.
Second.
Are there any commission comments? I hear none, Roque, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes. And now we're going to item number twelve, which is to authorize signing assignment of Savannah Cove ground lease and certificate, and accept discount payoff on a promissory note. City Attorney, would you please present this item?
Yes, so the city attorney's office is authorizing the signing of an assignment of Savannah Cove ground lease. They, the current lessee has sold the property, or is in the process of signing the property. With the terms of the ground lease, it is required for the commission to approve the assignment and issue a certificate. Along with this ground lease, the, the ground lease is for a payment of sixty-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, plus the sales tax, that's due on a monthly basis, and the, the lease is for a term of fifty years, which began in two thousand and three. Separate and apart from the ground lease is a promissory note that was entered into, in favor of the city, well, the city issued the promissory note as a means to front the lease payments. There's about two-hundred-thousand dollars owing on that promissory note, and it does not expire until two thousand and fifty-four. So the city attorney's office is asking that we accept a discounted payoff on that promissory note of the present value of what a two-hundred-thousand-dollar promissory note would be, which is a hundred-and-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. I know that there was an email that was submitted by Commissioner Carr where he had some concerns with the terms of the lease not moving forward. If we accept the, the payment on the promissory note, the city attorney's office has discussed that with him, and just for clarity for this board, the promissory note and the ground lease are two separate things. So if we, if you do allow for the acceptance of the discounted payoff on the promissory note, the lease terms will stay the same, and the, the assigned lessee will still continue to pay the sixty-one-twenty-four per, or sixty-one-twenty-five per month, and that would be in addition to the payment of the one-hundred-and-seven-thousand and change for the, the amount due and owing on the promissory note. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any commission, are there any public comments on this item? Here none? Need a motion? I need a motion.
Motion to approve?
You're approving the discount?
Yes.
Second.
Are, are, can I ask a clarifying question? Is the motion just to approve the accepted discounted payoff and not to authorize the signing of the assignment and certificate?
No, it's both.
Okay, so for approval, thank you.
Okay, so we have motion in a second. I have a couple of questions to ask Mrs. Jella. If we agree to receive the one-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars, the city will be still getting the monthly payment, which is the six-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five, correct?
That's correct, they're two separate issues.
Two, two separate issues. When the lease expires in March seventeenth, two thousand and fifty-four, are we obligated to renew the agreement? How's that work?
I'm sorry?
How's that work?
The, the lease agreement, as far as I'm, I understand it, it's the promissory note was set to come due on March seventeenth, two thousand and fifty-four. I am unclear about the lease terms and whether or not the, the ground lease is renewable. I have not reviewed those, the, the ground lease terms.
I will agree to that if the money that we give you, one-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars, goes to the land preservation fund. Commission comments? Commissioner Terapany?
Thank you. Mark, help me understand this, so we're given a discount on the payment for prepayment, right? So there's no longer gonna be a, a monthly payment of six thousand and change, correct?
Yes, there will be a payment.
So
This is just the promissory note, which is separate. So we had two choices, and this was something I initiated with the city attorney when this came in. First thing I asked the city attorney was, can we call the entire two-hundred, will we be able to get the two-hundred-thousand, it's selling, it's moving over to the company, can we get the two-hundred-thousand? And he says, and the city attorney told me, no, that that can, that can pass over, there's nothing in the provision of promissory note, so the original agreement was that was gonna pass over, we were gonna have another one in this new, new company's name, and it was gonna be two thousand and fifty-four before we get it. The next thing I asked is, knowing that, that these people wanted to close on the deal and need to do so on a timely manner, I wanted to see if we could get a settlement, 'cause in my mind, we have so many, so many things that we could use the money for now, a hundred, or, or a number now would be better than two-hundred-thousand in two thousand and fifty-four. And Ron Herring, who's in the audience, I think you see in the backup, came up with a formula, which is a nationwide-recognized formula of what that money is worth in today's time. We offered that up to him, you know, not knowing, obviously, they could do another promissory note and move on, but they wanted to settle. We negotiated like, you know, we're at issue with this, and they sent back to Mr. Tras that they would agree to the payoff of that promissory note, so we had two choices, we were left with two choices, and again, it's choices the board can decide. They'll either do another, they'll either take over the two-hundred-thousand-dollar promissory note for the money in two thousand and fifty-four, or they've agreed to, to pay the lump sum to us now that you can use for the land preservation fund, or wherever you decide to, to put that money to good use right now.
So the two-hundred would come due in, in two thousand and fifty-four?
Yes.
And, so that is in addition to the monthly lease?
Addition, yes.
So we'd still get the six grand?
Yes.
And where does that go now?
I believe, general fund?
What say you, Ron?
He was down there, 'cause he came up with that great formula to send them, to send to them and convince them that that was the number to come to, 'cause I know their number was coming to lower, lower than the one-hundred-and-seven-thousand, but Ron was able to come up with that to give them something to agree to, so.
So what happens in two thousand and fifty-four, then?
We'll get two-hundred-thousand dollars.
If we don't agree to
Right.
The reduction?
Right.
But do we then maintain a new ground lease in two thousand and fifty-four, or it expires in two thousand and fifty-four?
I'm not, I'm not sure of that for the ground lease.
So, my, my thinking is that a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow. Where we put it is a different story, but we still get the six thousand a month, which is good. I wasn't, I didn't realize that. So Ron, currently, the six thousand goes to the general fund, right? Sure.
Good evening, Ron Herring, Finance Director, correct, it goes into the general fund as rent.
And where would you, aside from the mayor's comment about it going to the land preservation, where would you see the hundred grand going? Wherever we want, is there
Well, it could go on an unassigned fund balance, but that's where all the rent is going right now in the general fund. But I know there is a preference to put it in the land preservation fund.
But there's nothing dictating where it has to go?
No.
Gotcha, okay. So, I agree with the reduction, like I said, a dollar today is worth more than one tomorrow. I don't know about, do we have to dictate tonight where it goes? Where we put it?
Well, if I'm gonna agree to that, I wanna make sure it goes to the land preservation.
Do you?
Yeah.
You don't see it as a
I think this is involved with the land, it should go to the land again.
Gotcha, okay, I'm good with that.
You know, if we did that later, it'd probably be a transfer that would become before the board to do a budget resolution to transfer that money from the general fund to the land preservation fund.
So Ron, and, and as an example of other monies that we earn from leases, 'cause I'm sure there's some, where does that money go?
Well, the other main lease is, is the city hospital lease, that's in the general fund. You know, a little over three-hundred-thousand a year. Basically, if there's anything left over, it ends up in unassigned fund balance.
Gotcha, okay, I'm good with the one-hundred-and-seven going to the land preservation fund, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you Mayor, yeah, I support the original motion, and I'm comfortable with it going to the land preservation fund, but I also think, and this is something we can discuss another time, maybe at a work session or something like that, maybe like a yearly update on the land preservation fund, as far as how much money's in it and prospective properties that we may be able to purchase and put into preservation, something like that. 'Cause I'm happy to, to stow it away for now and work towards that, but it'd be nice to just have kind of a, a running list of, you know, possible uses for it, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm good to do that later, but I'm, I'm comfortable with it going to land preservation fund.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
I don't have an issue with the land preservation fund, I think we're gonna have to have a resolution in order to do it, and there ought to be some guidelines associated with it. I'm not for creating a land preservation fund just to accumulate money like we've done with the tree fund. I mean, it needs to be put to use, and so I don't have an issue with that. And I'm not sure what would constitute uses for land preservation fund, whether it's maintaining land preservation areas, whether it's purchasing land preservation areas, I don't know what that means, but I don't have an issue with a land preservation fund. But I do know we need, like Commissioner Donovan is saying, we need to look at this at some future time and formalize it. I don't agree, I don't have a problem with moving forward with it tonight, but quite frankly, some future commission could just, just like that, change it, move it out of there and put it into something else. It could do that with a resolution as well, but at least if there's a program, there's less, and everyone understands what that is, there's a less likelihood for that to happen. The other thing is, I asked the city manager for a, a copy of the promissory note, it wasn't in the backup, and basically, the one thing that I think this commission needs to understand, back in two thousand and four, when this lease was first written, and if I'm not mistaken, this is our old nursing home, is that correct? The old nursing home that was
Please, sir.
Just needed a whole lot of work and everything, and, okay. And that was something that we really, is just, the, the deed was turned over to us at the end of the lease because of some, some statute or something that allowed to do that based on its funding, original financing. Anyway, if you look at that, there's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar amount that's in there, and, and on one side, it kinda goes through what the expenses are, and then the other thing, it goes through with where the money is gonna come from, and part of that was a two-hundred-thousand-dollar promissory note in two hundred, in, in two thousand and four, it was actually two-hundred-thousand, and that was the actual value in two thousand and four. And so what we're doing now is saying that it was two thou, so I, and I had a discussion on this with the city manager about this, and, and I said, okay, well, let's say if we had that promissory note, and for whatever reason, the owner wanted to do an early payoff four or five years later, are we gonna discount it for them, or are they gonna pay two-hundred-thousand, they're gonna pay two-hundred-thousand dollars? So what I see us doing right now is discounting something into the future, where I understand it's due to, it's due in two thousand and fifty-four, but the actual value in two thousand and four was two-hundred-thousand, it wasn't a hundred-and-seven-thousand or whatever we're calculating right now. So we're, we're gaming up some money on that, and I know, in, in fairness to the city manager, he thought that this would be a way to, good way to capture some of that money. I just, th, this is a big, deep-pocket organization that's taking this lease over, and I just think that we can work a little harder to get more money out of them. I do have one, one question to Mr. Herring, what, what year is this being discounted? I know two thousand and fifty-four is a maturity date, but did you do your discounting all the way back to two thousand and four? Or to this current year?
No, they came back first with an offer, and they said, based on the thirty-year treasuries, which were at two-point-zero-eight percent, and we did it starting from right now going forward thirty years.
Okay, that, that's good, I, I don't have an issue with that, we're not going all the way back and discounting it to two thousand and four. Okay. All right. Mr. Licoris, how much of a discussion did you have with them as far as wiggle room on this amount? Is this something that it's, they're hard-set on this one-hundred-and-four? I mean, I don't, I know you and I talked about it a little bit, and maybe you can give us a background a little bit, like you shared with me, maybe that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think, I, I think this is, I mean, they had offered, we had got them up to a hundred and two or a hundred and three, I wanted to get them up more, I think this is the highest, I think they'll resort, resort if we don't do, if we don't agree to this and want more, they'll just, they'll just decide to, to do the promissory note, to carry over to them, which, which they're able to do in the sale as it is. So I think we got them to the highest point that we could get them.
As high as you can go, you think you can go?
Yes.
All right, well
The city attorney was really the one negotiating with him and stuff, and, and he thought so, too.
Okay, and I, I told you, I just wanted to get a sense of what the commission's feeling is on this. The, the money, this hundred-and-seven-thousand or whatever it is, does that intended to go into the general fund? Or is this gonna go into the land preservation fund?
It would normally go into the general fund, but the, the board can place it where, you know, the board can place it wherever they wanna place it. Even when it goes to the general fund, they could decide to dedicate somewhere. I, I think the thought of the mayor is, since it's land and stuff, and, and, you know, we're trying to build that fund to be able to buy some lands to preserve. You know, we may be, depending on, you know, the controversy, there may be another chunk of money that's going to that land, and whether it's used for what in the future, but it can go, it would go in the general fund, but the board can dictate, you know, what fund it to go to, and could, could dictate it go there.
We really don't have any, we don't have any money in the land preservation board, uh, fund right now, is that correct, or do we?
It's down to about ten thousand dollars, we, we're at fifty thousand, we spent about forty thousand on some, some land over there, I think near the state, fire station seventy-one, stormwater-related stuff.
We're, we're using that fund to pay expenses as well for certain things?
Not much, I mean, that was like the first expense in a while, and, and the land, the policy on land preservation, it's supposed to be mostly for recreation and conservation purposes.
Okay, we can deal with the, like I said, maybe with a resolution later, but Mayor, I, I would suggest if this is what our interest is, to put that, I don't have a problem if we put the one-hundred-and-seven towards land preservation, rather than putting it in our general fund, we've got our budget set this year, is that correct?
Yes.
So I would prefer to put that one-hundred-and-seven, or whatever that amount is, into the land preservation fund as well.
Yeah, after all, it's land-related, it should go there.
Yeah, is that okay with the commission?
Thank you, I think we need to modify our motion to include that.
I'll, I made the motion, correct? I'll amend the motion to that effect.
Second.
Okay, Roque, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you. Next is item number thirteen, approved students' engagement program for use of American Rescue Plan. Mr. Licoris?
Yes, I believe that the next step, obviously, you've seen, we, I think we sent it to you last week, and it's in the backup, we've done an analysis of staff, of, of what staff thought the, some usage of the money could be. money could be, and of course, as you see, it's way beyond the amount we're getting, but it's a lot of the most important projects that we're thinking over the next five years. So, we've done that, um, we promised when these funds came in that we would, we would, would use different public engagement, um, type activities. One would be, of course, the new program that we got. Obviously, we need to come to either a special meeting or have this on the agenda to have people in the audience to give us feedback, but, um, I think the next step before we have it as an agenda item or a special item, a town hall or whatever, I think the first thing to do is, is to get some citizens' idea, put in the citizen engagement platform, um, what the money can be used for by the federal government, to show them some of the ideas that staff has come up with, get the citizens' ideas in this survey, and then the next step would be to have whatever public hearings, um, to have them hear live, you know, also giving more input before this board, um, makes the decision, the ARPA. So, all I'm asking for is to, to go forward, so we get moving, because, you know, I'm anxious to begin some of these projects with the half of the money that we have. Remember, the other half's coming into, to next year, so we can look at all these items we want to do and say which ones we should do in this first wave and begin now, which ones we can do in a year. But I think this would be a good start to get citizens' ideas and to continue them with the actual live meetings, however we set them up, um, after we get that in, from the citizen engagement program. So, I'm bringing that forward to see if the board agrees with that and, uh, and move forward with the next step.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? I hear none. Uh, need a motion?
Motion to approve the citizen engagement program for use of ARPA funding.
Second.
So, Mr. LaCouris, just for clarification, the only thing you're looking right now is to be able to have a citizens' engagement survey, right?
Yes, I like to get this information, we have now out to them, and then, you know, and then set up, hopefully, something real soon after that, um, so we have the live input from the public.
Okay. Well, it's very important to have the public input. Can you please explain what methods you will use to reach out to the, to the public?
As you know, we've had the platform that we've been using on several items, we just put out about the strategic plan to get information, so we will, we will put that out, um, notify, try to notify as many people as possible about it being available. Um, we'll work with some of the groups, um, if there are people, whether it's business people or residents, um, and there's a problem with the platform to try to get their information in it. So, it, it's really using the, the platform that planning developed, and we've been using for everything to get feedback so far, um, in reaching out, we've been pretty successful. Hopefully, we're real successful with a strategic plan on our input from it. So, we're going to use the method that we've been working with and getting some good responses on, and that's what we'd get started and hopefully get out real soon before, you know, as soon as we can, you know, possibly as soon as next week.
Um, yes, Mr. LaCouris, I support that, but since we're talking about public, uh, survey, have you, uh, found a date for the, for town hall meeting for the, uh, the Decanese Boulevard flood project, which is so important? We're starting down there.
Well, I was asked to, to find one for the several ones we have, and, uh, and the one date I've been able to find, remember, December's going to be the, a condensed schedule of all the boards in the first two weeks of December, so that one was hard. There was a date, an off Tuesday, the end of this month, but two commissioners can't make that meeting, so right now, I, I don't have a meeting before the end of the year for any town hall meeting or special meeting at this time.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any commission comments? Commissioner Donovan?
Are we talking about this item still?
Yeah.
I have. Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mark, this might not be something you can answer, it might be something, uh, better suited for Ron, but I, I recall when we were talking about this originally, there was a lifespan on the ARPA funds, like a use-by date. Is, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
And what year is that? Isn't that like-
26? Ron, Ron knows it like the back of his hand, 26.
26, okay, so these have all got to be used by 2026?
Yes.
Okay. And then what's the timeline for citizen engagement? Do you have like, uh, you know, hey, we're going to go out between now and April, or now and next week?
No, usually it's out for three, three weeks, maybe four. With, with Thanksgiving coming up, we may need to have to add an extra week, allowing for the Thanksgiving week. But usually it's out three or four weeks. Again, we got, get a lot of preliminary information to them, and then, you know, our next step, we'll be trying to figure out, and it may just have to be on an agenda, one of December's agenda. I'd like to start the public engagement, um, you know, in these chambers in person, um, so it might just be an agenda item where we, where we initiate the people coming into the audience and being, coming here to give us further input to supplement that. And of course, the input, also in this process, there's the input for the commissioners, so some things that aren't on the list that staff did that, that the commission may want to add to this list.
Okay. And then how will this work in the budget process? So, is this going to be something that's kind of like, it's almost separated from our normal budget? We'll have, okay, well, those are the ARPA funds, maybe we don't touch all of them, you know, this year, or set all of the different capital projects we're going to do?
Ron, you want to tell them how you envision?
Yes, probably what we do is when we come back, and we'll probably come back with a budget resolution and put, you know, whatever your items you're budgeting for in there. We do have the money, we've separated into a separate fund, and our plan was for each different project, we're going to give it a different project number to track it, because every, in October, we have to have, submit to the US Treasury, they want to know, what did we spend the money on, and it's going to be audited, so we got to make sure we track all these expenditures. So, yes, it'd be part of the budget, or, or a budget amendment that goes before the board.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any other questions, I'm, I'm fine with moving forward with citizen engagement, I don't want to discuss each project tonight.
I have a comment.
Yes, sure.
I'm a little confused, are we saying that we're going to be planning to spend all of the $12 million over the next 12, a couple of months?
No.
Okay.
No, you'll prioritize, like I said, we'll prioritize those. Um, I think what we'll be looking at is which projects we're going to start first. Which one of these, obviously, we've got 6 million of it right now. Um, we've got, we know the timeframe, the board knows the timeframe, there's, you know, you'll decide which ones we start first, and kind of, we'll kind of come up with almost the type of plan of, of what we need, given us plenty of time, so everything we want to do with this money, you know, I like to complete it, you know, well before the time limit. We know how situations go with, we don't want any extensions. So, that would be a board, and this would be a plan to, obviously, doing all of these at once would really put a strain on staff and everything else, but kind of timeline and start working on these and setting up a schedule, um, for the next four years, um, to do the projects that this commission thinks is best, um, you know. And, and again, you remember, this is not only money we're using for projects, but this is money we'll be freeing up the other funds, we'll be freeing up Penny for Pinellas funds, we'll be, we'll be sparing up some utility money, so we'll be also doing projects and freeing up money to do additional projects. So, this will get us a lot more. We'll be, have to discuss in budget-wise what we use the money for that we had planned to use, for instance, Penny for, there'll be that Penny money that'll be available for other projects. And probably those are projects that aren't covered under the ARPA funds, so we'd have more money to do those projects.
I, I, I think that, um, a couple of things. One, um, the, um, the, first of all, let me get this one off my chest, there's, there's the, um, the, the various local basins that we've got, MLK, Spring Boulevard-type basins, uh, Spring, Reed Canal, we've got the Sponge Docks that, uh, which we have a grant for at Athens, we've got the other end at Hope Street, the, I didn't see those on there, but it, they would require an in-ground type vault system as well, and there was about six of them in different locations. I don't see this and this amount of money, uh, in this list of projects in the stormwater.
Um, I thought they were, but I'll, I'll look again.
Okay. Um, that's number one. Number two, um, there ought to be some consideration, um, when you go through this, as far as some may be ripe for, or may be easier to get grants for than others.
Yes.
So, I, I don't know that we should focus on, you know, establishing as an equal priority to something that we may be able to get a grant for easily, as compared to something we know we're not going to get a grant for.
Yes, sure.
So, that's, that's another observation.
Yes, you're correct.
And then number three is that, um, these citizen engagement meetings, I, I know about the Connect Tar, that's what you're talking about, the Connect Tarpon Springs, there's still this reluctance of people going on and giving their information, that, you know, in other words, to, to, to create an account and giving information to it. Um, and, and my point there is that, and I know you want, you suggested bringing it back an agenda item for something like this as well, but I also want to make sure that we all recognize that the staff can do this without a public meeting, right? You can have your own citizen engagement meeting here on a Saturday afternoon or something, without it being a public meeting. So, there's a lot of opportunities to do that, I would think. Certainly, it's going to be a little more inconvenient to the staff, but certainly, I, I think it's going to give the, the residents an opportunity to come here and actually listen to people, rather than trying to do something on a computer, because a lot of people are still not computer literate, I, I don't want to say literate, but savvy, they don't rely on the computer, and, and then there's also that reluctance to get on to Tar, Connect Tarpon Springs. So, I want to make sure that we, we provide every opportunity we can, either, uh, Connect Tarpon Springs, uh, citizen engagement meetings here, um, having the Rotary Clubs, the local Rotary Clubs, maybe a presentation to them to show them just what the list is, and I, I don't know. My point is, this is an important thing, $12 million. And then, um, and I do know that, um, you said that we would still have Penny for Pinellas, and, and, but I also want to point out that this is, the, just the amount that you've got here is $28 million.
Yes.
And our ARPA is 12, and I don't even know what the Penny, Penny Fund would be over that, uh, let's say, three or four-year period through 2026. So, it may be helpful for Ron to estimate what the Penny for Pinellas funds would be over that, um, I guess, four-year, five-year fiscal year period, to see what, how much that would go to reaching that $28 million. Uh, and I do know that these are, um, estimates, just very, very, very rough estimates, but still, it's something to work to, and, and quite frankly, I think it's, it's great to have this. And I still think at some point, um, whether we get, use ARPA funding or not, uh, for example, the fire station, some of these other things, we need to actually establish target dates on these. When you, as a city manager and the staff feel, we need, actually have to have these in place in order to continue providing the services we do, we need to, to the residents. So, um, I, I think this list is great, but at some point, I'd like to see the Penny Funds rolled into this, and also actually have some target dates of when we would actually accomplish these things, whether it's ARPA funding or some other means, grant, or Penny for Pinellas funding.
Yes, I agree with all that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusza?
Yes. Well, back with us is a special session agenda, and we'll go to staff comments. Major Trill?
Yeah, I want to congratulate Detective Sergeant Fognow, who retired this week. Um, wish him well on his new journey, uh, and also recognize and thank him for over 27 years of dedicated service to the city of Tarpon Springs. Uh, we hate to see him go, um, but we do have his son to replace him, so he's working for us, Scott Fognow. Uh, number two is I want to remind everybody about November 11th, to meet us out at Craig Park on our Veterans, Veterans Day, um, ceremony. Uh, that'll be at 11 o'clock on 11/11 at Craig Park, and that's about it for me.
Thank you. Sierra Tony, Agello?
No comment.
And thank you for serving with us tonight. Mr. LaCouris?
Um, none at this time.
Ms. Jacobs?
I have no comments, thank you.
Commission Terapany?
No comments, Mayor.
Commission Donovan?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
I'm just, want to continue expressing my, um, appreciation for all the activity that we see going in town, ribbon cuttings, special events, they're increasing in number, and the people are coming, um, and I know our police department and our fire department is much more visible at these events as well, and I think that's extremely important to the residents, and I very much appreciate that as well. So, um, I just think that we should all continue keeping up the good work. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
Last week, I returned from the two-in-a-ceremonies from our new sister cities, Hania, Idra, and Iliida, and I'd like to thank the mayors and their staff for, uh, of the cities for their hospitality. Also like to thank Vice Mayor Carr and my fellow commissioners for covering for me while I was away. Uh, the city of Hania would like to visit Tarpon Springs during the Epiphany Celebration to complete the, the second phase of our Sister City Program. The city of, uh, Iliida, the Amaliada, will be visiting Tarpon Springs in March to celebrate the Greek Independence Day to complete the second phase of the Sister City Program. Also, I extend an invitation to the President of Greece to attend the Greek Independence Day Celebration here in Tarpon Springs, and if her schedule allows, she would love to be here in Tarpon Springs to celebrate with us. With that, um, that's all I have, and, um, that concludes the, uh, special session, and it's adjourned at 9:11 PM.